Good evening.
Good evening.
September 21st, 2020, County Commissioners' Meeting will now please come to order. First item on the agenda, of course, is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. And please join Vice Chairman Clint Adams and the Board in honoring God and country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We can bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come today just saying thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be able to assemble here today. Father, we ask you to touch each one of us as we do the county's business. We ask you to touch our hearts to make sure everything is done decent and in order. We ask you to continue to bless this nation and this state and this county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I think I'll use this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Adams. And please join us again with Vice Chairman Adams as he recognizes a county department for a great achievement.
PIO Office, the stand where they all, half of them are back in the back, some are out here. Y'all stand up. This is important. Come on over here, Ms. Sal. And this is a recognition of the Public Information Office for First Place Communication Award. It's with the City of Fayetteville, but more important is with Cumberland County. So Cumberland County was among 22 North Carolina governments to earn recognition in the North Carolina City and County Communicators 2020 Excellence in Communication Awards. Cumberland County and the City of Fayetteville won a first-place award for crisis communication for their collaborative work in the Joint Information Center during the response to Hurricane Dorian in September 2019. The Joint Information Center provided updates on the storm, shelter openings, and the city and county operations, as well as staffing a hurricane information line, I remember that, for residents. Excuse me. The North Carolina City and County Communications Organizations encouraged professional development and networking among local governmental communication professionals. The organization was formed in March 2017, oh, 2007, and consists of professional government communicators from across the state. And this is the lovely award, so that our Commissioners can see it. It's the NC 3C, North Carolina City and County Communicators, Excellence in Communications, First Place Crisis Communication, Cumberland County, Grace and Forest Storm, Hurricane Dorian, 2020. I give you this. And I would tell you that when we were going through that, all the information that was being provided, you know, a lot of people talk about in this county whether the city and the county can work together. We do know that we can do that, and this is a prime example. And even though sometimes, I think we, remember we talked about it, when we're talking about branding, they say sometimes the people in Cumberland County and Fayetteville are hard on ourselves than other people. This shows you that throughout the state, they recognize what happens in Cumberland County and the city of Fayetteville.
Thank you. And I'm so grateful for this, and I do want to recognize the people who are on this team. So during Hurricane Dorian, working in our Joint Information Center along with the folks in the City of Fayetteville were John Souls, our Public Information Specialist Claudia Severs. Yes, and Tristan Bailey was with us. She's now with Guilford County. Now Manning the phone lines and the hurricane information line was Cherry Beth Thomas and Kim Brown. Now in December, our team expanded. We have Kristen Bunton now. She's not here tonight, but she joined our team in December. And then just last week, we have joining our team Lou Cherry and Jared Thompson. So I'm very grateful for this public information team and the great work they're doing. And we look forward to coming back to update you on our website and our Cumberland County NC TV channel.
You know, that's the problem we have. You know I like to take pictures, but it is the organization itself that does all of that. So congratulations Sally and the PIO Office.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Adams, and thank you, PIO Office, for the job well done. At this time, we'll have our public comment period. We'll open the public comment period. I'll ask the clerk if there are any speakers.
There are no speakers.
Since there are no speakers, we won't, we won't call on County Manager to read the policy. But at this time, I'll close the public comment period, and I'll ask for an approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one request. Could we move item 4E? It's a planning case. It's listed under the contested. It's P-2041. It is now uncontested.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Hear motion to approve the agenda of moving E, Case P-20-41, to the uncontested.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Item two, Ms. Cannon.
Item number two is a presentation. We thought it would be timely to have an update on Census 2020. This evening, we have our co-chairs with us, Rawls Howard and Dr. Anthony Wade.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Board members. It's my pleasure to stand before you this evening with Dr. Anthony Wade, who is my esteemed colleague and partner in this endeavor with the Census with the City of Fayetteville. We've been working together since I've come on board of this, what, the last maybe five, six, seven months. As you know, that we're hitting a deadline coming up toward this month. I thought it would be a good thing to stand before you with him to just let you know, give you some updates on what we're doing as a county, what they are doing as a city, give you some updated figures, and be able to answer any questions in regards to this whole process of where we are right now. So some of the recent activities that the county has been working on is that, is that we have now posted yard signs throughout the county. We had over 250 that were posted in various locations, primarily on public pieces of property, volunteer fire departments, community centers, town halls. That was a, very much a joint effort between us and the PIO Office. I'd like to thank Sally and her staff for helping, trying to get those things organized and coordinated. And also, the City of Fayetteville also posted some on their city facilities as well, too. So that was a pretty big endeavor. So some other things that we've done is that we've mailed out Census cards. So we had about, I'd say about 500, 600 of these cards printed up. They're business card size. We've been passing those out, of course, and as we started to approach the deadline coming up to the end, what we were doing is I had told my staff, since we are a mail-heavy department, we started inserting these cards in every piece of mail correspondence going out of the department. So if you got something, whether it was from code enforcement or just a "hey, how you doing?" letter, you got this sort of card that was there just to remind you about doing your census. So we sent out 400, but we had well over that made when we actually started that. And then some of the other things that we've done, as you're all aware of, I saw all of y'all's faces on the PSAs that we had done. So again, I want to thank Ms. Shutt and her staff for putting those together in such a quick timeframe. So we have the Commissioner videos that we produced, and of course, we had over 2,000 hard copy flyers that we distributed at various locations, and they were very strategic in the way that we put those out. We did it like for the school lunch handouts, we would hand out flyers at those schools and locations. We also would hand out these flyers at our solid waste collection facilities and places where people would come and congregate to conduct business. We had these flyers distributed at those places as well, in addition to libraries and all the convenience sites. So I'll stop with some of the county things that we've done since the last time I gave you a presentation on this. I will pass it off to Dr. Wade, who can try to just let you know what the City of Fayetteville's done with their efforts.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Vice Chair members of the County Commissioners. Per Vice Chairman Adams' statement, a little bit early, it has been a very collaborative and a very positive, progressive working environment and relationship with, between the county and city. I want to thank your Public Information Office for working with our city corporate communications office, Kevin Arata, Mayne Johnson, and the rest of the team, and they have collaborated on a lot of things that have allowed us to push things out on social media, as well as print and broadcast media. And so once again, we couldn't have done it without them. They are truly a force multiplier. Per the comments that were made earlier, in addition to the county commissioner of PSAs, our mayor and city council have also put out PSAs, and they are running six to seven times a week. We also were able to create something known as a Young Resonance PSA, which allowed three of our youth, our millennial generation, to actually speak to why the census is important to them. And we wanted to reach out to that demographic simply because that's a demographic that sometimes doesn't always feel as valued as it should. It certainly needs to be counted, and they are the future. And so we were, we were very blessed to have these young people engaged, and the PSA is on the city's YouTube page. Recently had a September 2nd Greater Fayetteville United Membership Meeting. Their president, Mr. Casey Harney, asked me to come out and speak to his group to give them an update, and so I was able to do it on behalf of my chair, my co-chair and me. And basically, one of the things that we have is collaboration with the North Carolina Counts Coalition, and one of the things they're promoting is something called an Adopt a Track Program. And what it does is it encourages organizations to apply for grants that are up to, I think it's between 1,000 and 2,500, and they promote outreach and awareness in unaccounted areas. So those areas that we feel like we might be unaccounted in, that may be underrepresented, we want to make sure that we can get to them, and NC Counts Coalition's been a collaborator in that. New PSAs, once again, the one that I mentioned a little bit earlier, the young generation, featuring Generation Z. We're also running How to Fill Out the 2020 Census. And again, all of our PSAs are running multiple times on our various social media platforms, and they will continue right up until the end, which is September 30th.
So based off that, Commissioners, I also wanted to take this opportunity on a public platform to also acknowledge our partners with the Census Bureau, Mrs. Sharon Covington, who's been an outstanding partner with us. She's done an outstanding job. It's just a really show of force when you have the federal government and their representatives with such a strong partnership with city and county government. I've been notified today that with the deadline coming up toward the end of this month, Ms. Covington is pretty much, she's done with the job at the end of this week. So we're pushing as hard as we can for the days that we have left. So for the remainder of this presentation, I just wanted to go over the current response rates. I know that's probably burning on your mind right now about where we stand with our numbers. So currently, right now, you've seen this chart from the last presentation that we gave. We got these this morning, but they're indicative of September 18th, so this would have been last week. So at the end of last week, we have a national response rate. It's sitting about 66% so far. We have a North Carolina rate that's hovering about 62, and Cumberland County is hanging in right there, pretty much where the state is right now, at 61.3. Something I do want to point out, if I may, see, most of you are probably looking over here. You probably can't see it on there. I'm hoping you have screens where you can see it. This number that was down here was sitting at 73%. I got a clarification from that, from the Census Bureau, so it's not as bad as we thought it was. It's sitting right now at 65%. So the 2010 response rate, that's self-response, I should say, too. These are people that are proactively responding on their own volition in order to be able to get this done. With 65% in 2010, for Cumberland County, it was 69% in 2000. Right now, we're sitting at about 61%, so we're just slightly below where we were in 2010 with about a week left to go. So, and then you can see some pretty noticeable jumps, actually, when you start looking at the towns. Of course, let's see, Spring Lake went from 46 to 50. You're sitting right around maybe a 4% to 6% jump from the last time that we reported this, about 30 days ago, if you look at it across the board. I'll let you just soak that in here just for a second, in case you got any questions. But you can see where Falcon was at 38. They were now at 45. Wade, 47, at 50. You got Godwin at 38. They're now at 42 or 43%. So I think over the last 30 days, we've made a hard push, and we're seeing what we can, but you see where the numbers stand currently right now. But something else I wanted to point out, which I didn't include in the last presentation, that I think would be good for you just to have an understanding, and if I can, if I can move on unless you don't have any questions here, of course, we can get this to you if you want to look at it personally. We actually looked at the non-response follow-up rates. Now, this is the work that the, that the field workers are doing right now. So these are the folks that are filling in the cracks, so to speak. They're out there knocking on doors, crunching data, and trying to get everybody they can that's out there that didn't do the self-response. So where we are with Cumberland County, and I put this map up here from the website that you can see on the census, but this is the Fayetteville ACO, which is the entire area that's, how the census has broken this up and how they try to manage their field staff to go out and collect this data, is they're in these areas called ACOs. Where we are as a county, so basically what this means is, is that, you saw we're about 60%, right? So the delta or the difference of that at 40%. Out of that 40%, we've gotten 75.3% of that 40%. Does that make sense? Okay, I want to make sure that I'm hitting on that. So where does Cumberland County stand with the rest of everybody else? If you look at where we are in the state, we're pretty much smack dab in the middle. We're above Greenville, which if you look, if you're familiar with the geography, and you can't see the lines here, but basically I-95 east, that whole swath all the way to the coast is basically Greenville's ACO. We're above, you know, pretty much where eastern Carolina stands, we're above that. We're above Durham, but we're below Raleigh, and we're, but we're above Winston-Salem. So again, we're hovering right there in the middle. I think everybody's sort of feeling the pain and trying to get as much work as they can get out with the deadline that's looming at the end of this month. Let you soak on that for a minute, but if there are not any questions, just letting you know where the next steps is where we're going to be, is to continue to monitor and work with the federal deadlines. There's a number of federal appeals right now that are floating around. There's been, I've been told by the Census Bureau, there's injunctions floating around in California. There are other states that are fighting the fact they want to extend the deadline. But right now, as we're seeing it right now, there's no, there's no word from the Census Bureau that that's going to take place. So for all intents and purposes, we're still looking at a end of September deadline. So of course, our activities with the remaining 12 dates that we have, 12 days that we have right now is going to be supportive of those activities that these folks are doing out in the field, and then continue to work with our community partners, who I just told you about just a minute ago, to try to do as much media pushing as we can between now and the next week or two. So, yeah, if you want to add something else, absolutely.
And we'd be remiss if we didn't identify our community engagement coordinator, Nikia Smith, with the North Carolina Counts Coalition. And to that end, we're still boots on the ground this coming Sunday over at Smith's Recreation Center. There's going to be another drive-through push for the census, and it'll, I think it's going to run from 1 until 5. I know that we've got the space in the parking lot from 12 until 6, and I just, all right, I just coordinated with Parks and Recs and Ms. Smith to continue to get the word out.
So. That's the last slide. I'll try to answer what I can.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Keith?
Okay, Rawls, Dr. Wade, thank you for coming. Got two questions. First of all, what is the metric for the 100%? Because we all know that we're in a bit of a transient community. So if we're at 61% of, I'm assuming, the 100, where is the 100? How are you identifying the 100? Is it from last census or?
Yes. Okay. I think it would be benchmarked by the last census.
Okay, so do you understand what I'm asking?
I think, yes.
It's 61% of what?
It would be the last census based off what was done for, no, actually, sorry. I would, I would back that up. My understanding of the 61% would be the current understanding of, yes, what the population was in 2010.
But what the population was, as opposed, so we believe that we are counting every man, woman, child that is in there, so we have had a response of 61% of 335,000 people?
Yes. That's my understanding as well, Commissioner.
Okay. And if I could ask, you know, Dr. Wade and Rawls, as you're going through this, you know, as we talked about, we've got to find this way to come together on a lot of things, and I think we're really working hard, but, you know, if, if you have other PSAs from other individuals, whether they be school board members or even Hope Mills members playing on earth, and, and Dr. Wade, is, you know, all of us county commissioners, we represent the City of Fayetteville, too. So if there could be some, some cross in there, it's not just like we're county and your city, you know, collectively, going back and seeing some faces, I think that people may understand the importance, because it is. I mean, it is truly, truly important on so many levels on this census, and it's a failure if we can't get those numbers that we need to be getting. So, you know, I would encourage you in this last week, you know, it's, it's all hands on deck, and cross-promote if we have to, and, you know, get some other people from some of the other municipalities, the school board, and whoever else is out there on it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that your point is spot on. We've had awesome collaboration, whether it be the Cumberland Community Foundation, whether it's been the school system and Dr. Conley, whether it's been our municipalities, Spring Lake, we went out and had a meeting with Maria Dobbins, and just based on one meeting, he actually went out and created a PSA featuring himself and took, had signs delivered around town. He had about 50 signs that were delivered. So those collaborations, to your point, sir, are ongoing, and you're right, Clint. All hands on deck until the very end.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you for taking times out of your busy schedule. We know this is not the only job you have, and we salute you, and we thank you, and we know the result come next Tuesday will be, will be in the showing.
Thank you, sir.
It will show in the results. Thank you so much. This time, we'll have our consent agenda. Ms. Cannon?
Yes, sir. Item number three is a consent agenda.
What is your pleasure?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. Item number four is a public hearing this evening, Mr. Chairman. It's a public hearing on the Community Development Program Year 2019, the Draft Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, better known, in short, as the CAPER. This evening, we have our Community Development Director, Ms. Dee Taylor, that's going to walk us through some, an overview of the CAPER.
Welcome, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Now, before I proceed with the request to hold a public hearing, I do want to just give you a brief summarization of the report that you have before you. So as you know, that at the beginning of each program year, Community Development prepares an annual action plan, and that identifies the projects and activities that we plan to undertake during the program year, and how we plan to use our funding resources to address those activities. Then at the end of the program year, we prepare the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and that pretty much describes the performance, how we perform in meeting those goals and objectives. Both of these reports are submitted to HUD for review and approval. And so during the reporting period, which began July 1 of 2019 and ended June 30 of 2020, Community Development did meet some of the goals of the activities and projects that are reported in the report, such as we did expand public services and human services type activities. We funded three nonprofit agencies to provide prescription medication and also shelter services to low to moderate income persons. We put a little under $100,000 into a sanitary sewer project in the Spring Lake area. We've also completed Phase 1 of the renovation of a transitional housing program that is used to provide temporary housing and services to those who are homeless and who have a substance use disorder. And then we completed rental housing units in the Spring Lake area, where we put approximately $200,000 into the, to new construction of those units. So we did well in those areas, however, we did fall short on our housing rehab, in that most of the delay is caused, of course, by the pandemic, in which, speaking of which, we did receive additional funding, as you are aware, from HUD through the CARES Act in an amount of $509,194. We allocated those funds towards our Small Business Resiliency Program and have awarded 20 businesses with a little over $180,000. Just last week, we received a letter from HUD with additional funding during their third round of allocation in the amount of $435,210. The plan is to allocate those funds through a Request for Proposal process. Those funds can be used for the similar activities that we use our regular CDBG entitlement, except that it does need to tie back to the pandemic. And so these type eligible activities include public services, public facilities, economic development activities. Community Development will continue to keep you posted on a quarterly basis. We'll submit our reports through the agenda sessions, and if you don't have any questions, then I would like to request that the Board hold a public hearing for the draft 2019 CAPER to allow for public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. We'll reserve questions until after the public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. I'll ask the clerk if there are any speakers.
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers, so we will close the public hearing. Are there questions for Ms. Taylor? Mr. Booth?
Is it, she said on the 2020, but on our agenda says 2019.
Oh, let me explain. So let me explain, so what I mean by program year, that is the county's fiscal year 20, but it's our program year 2019, which begins July, yes, sir, July 1, 2019.
All the money ladies, that all squared away. I didn't want to freak her out and give her two years.
It's a good question. It's a good question. Other questions? Say nothing. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you. At this time, we'll, we'll need a motion. We don't need a motion.
No, no action.
No action.
I'm just reading what was written for me.
Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll move into our uncontested rezoning cases. We'll begin with Case 4B, which is P-20, P-20-40.
Okay, Mr. Rawls.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just to go over very quickly, this is the case for our uncontested. This is Case P-20-40. This is a case that is out in the, let's just say, the Bethany area of the counties, as you can see by the locator map. Won't go into too much detail, but essentially, this was just simply a rezoning from A-1 to R-40. The applicant just wished to have the ability to put a second home on the property. As you can see, this is out on the Wade-Stedman Road. Staff is recommending it. It went to the planning board, got a unanimous vote in support of it. It's plan compliant. So unless you have any questions, be prepared to go into a presentation if you have any issues with it.
Seeing no questions, this time, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers on this case?
There are no speakers.
No speakers, close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion? Somebody ready with this motion?
Mr. Chairman, in Case P-20-40, I move to approve the rezoning request from A-1 Agriculture to R-4 Residential and find the request consistent with the 2030 Growth Vision Plan of 2009, which designate this parcel for rural areas. Rural areas destination allows a density as high as two units acre, provided the soils and the topographic do not hinder development, and a centralized water system exists. Approval of the rezoning is also reasonable and in the public interest, as the requested district is in harmony with the surrounding existing land uses and zoning, and the parcel is connected to public water.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to drop down to 4E. As you may recall, the Board moved that to an uncontested rezoning case. That is P-20-41.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, this is a case that sits quite literally at the boundary of Eastover, but sits in the county jurisdiction, as you can see by the indicator map up above. This is a request from Hubert McDonald Jr. and Wade McDonald on behalf of 301 Truck Stop, the agent's Ann Locklear. The request was to go to O&amp;I, or from O&amp;I, conditional zoning and CP, to CP. So this went before the Board at the last meeting. It was a unanimous approval from the Board. It was supported by staff. meeting. It was a unanimous approval from the Board. It was supported by staff. At first, the applicant did not, or had an issue with it, so it became a contested case. But since then and now, we've gotten in writing, we were able to work with the applicant. The applicant came back and gave us something in writing that said that they didn't have a problem with staff's recommendations and planning board's recommendations, so we moved it up to the uncontested. And I'll be glad to open this up if you need to, but reviewing this as an uncontested case right now.
Ross, when you're referring to Board, you're talking about the planning board. Is that correct?
Correct. I'm sorry.
Just want to clarify that for the record.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers on this one?
There are no speakers.
No speakers. We'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or items of discussion for Mr. Ross? Mr. Howard?
This is the E case?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm kind of, this said to deny, is that meaning, I'm trying to figure out where we are. Well, my thing is says to deny, the planning board and the staff deny.
We denied the original application and then we made an alternative recommendation to a separate type of motion. And so, when we did that, we took that to the planning board. Then, the planning board backed up staff's recommendation of what the alternative request was, and that passed by a unanimous vote. So, between then, we got a letter from the applicant who basically said, "We have worked with staff. We don't have a problem with staff's recommendation, even though it was an alternative-like recommendation. They're fine with it." And the planning board was fine with it. Now, the applicant's fine with it. So, we didn't see a need to put it on a contested agenda unless you wanted me to go through the presentation.
I think the confusion is over the proper motion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the motion. There is no alternative to, from what you're talking about in front of what I had, was just deny everything. Is there, I mean, there's no alternative.
Yeah. So, on the, let me see if I can find the, what's the Board's motion?
In the motion, it says, if you go to the third line down, it says, "Instead, move to approve O&amp;IP slash CZ for general office and C1P."
Wait a minute, where are you at now?
If you go down to the bottom where it says, "Motion," in the third line, go over and it says, "And instead, move to approve."
No, not on mine. Not on mine. I don't know what we're looking at. Maybe I'm wrong.
Mine won't come up, so I have no help at all.
There is no, it just says I move.
If the Board of Commissioners wishes to follow the recommendation of the planning board in this case, the following motion is appropriate. And then, it has "Motion" in all caps. If you go to the third line, it lists the denial and then instead, to move to approve.
I see. Okay. Move to approve O&amp;I?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see. All right.
Go ahead and take.
In Case P-20 dash 41, I moved to deny the rezoning from HSP, Plan Highway Services District slash CU, Conditional Use Overlay for an emergency personnel training, and HSP, Plan Highway Services District, to O&amp;IP, Plan Office and Institutional District, Conditional Zoning for General Office and Plan Commercial. Instead, move to approve, approve, O&amp;I slash Conditional Zoning for General Office and CIP, Plan Local Business District, where the applicant requested CP. The Board finds the approval is an amendment to the adopted current Eastover Land Use Plan, the 2018 map, and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional requests or application for amendment to said map for this request. B, the following change in condition was considered in amending the zoning ordinance, the zoning map, to meet the development needs of the community. The Eastover Land Use Plan of 2018 does not include a recommendation that commercial development should be allowed to occur where convenient goods slash needs could be provided on properties outside the Eastover Town Limits. C, and this rezoning approval is reasonable and in the public interest because the district approved, would be more in line with the adopted plan than the existing zoning on the parcels and the CIP. Our district is designed to allow users that would provide uses, that would provide convenient needs and services while prohibiting NOCS's uses near residential areas.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. So, Mr. Chairman, we'll move back up to 4C, which is Case P-20 dash 15.
That's a mouthful, right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This, let's see. This case was a case that was deferred, if you recall, from last month. We had it on a uncontested part of the agenda. And then, at the meeting, we had somebody to show up that was speaking on the case, so then it moved it and you guys ultimately decided to move it to this meeting. So, if you want, I'll just go very briefly through this. This is, you can see on the map where it's located in the county, but specifically, it's off Macedonia Church Road, sitting near the intersection of Old Vanderd Road. The applicant owner is Alex and Kathy Colbreth. The request is to go from A1 to R40 for about 4.6 acres. You can see by the map here, generally, this is not a split zone piece of property. So, the lines that you see highlighted in the red are actually the parcel lines that are there. You can see pretty much it's a residential area of the county. If you look specifically at the land uses, it's pretty much a mix of, pretty much all residential and open land. You have a mix of single wade, double wades, and single-family residential pretty much around the area. Again, just giving you a better look with an aerial, so you can see what's out there. There is a structure that's currently, that you'll see in the photographs here in just a minute. There's an old house that is here. We have, staff has noticed by the driveway and through our field verification that you can see that appears that there was maybe a second home out here at some point with the split wishbone driveway that was there. But you can see, pretty much it's surrounded by woods and various other types of residential structures. But you can see the A1 zoning pretty much permeates all around it with a little bit of RR and R40 across the street at the corner. When you look at the soils or the utility provisions for this particular area, that there are, it's got good soils. So, there's no real hydroic or hydroconclusion soils, but there's also no water and no sewer that's really available in this area right now. When we looked at the plan, the plan pretty solidly says that anything that's one unit or less per acre is compliant. We felt like that this request is fully compliant with the comp plan. That's why staff gave the recommendation that they did. But you can see in the green is rural, like, is the rural residential, then across the street you have agricultural. You can see, this is the subject property that I alluded to a little bit earlier. As you can see, there's an older house that's sitting out there right now. This is looking west down Macedonia Church Road with the property immediately on the left. You can see the county van sitting there parked as we do our business. This is looking right across the street. You see, it's a house. Looking east, back in the opposite direction from two slides ago, you can see our sign. We posted the sign out there on the site to show that we did that. Again, staff had recommended approval. We felt it was fully plan compliant. We took it to the planning board. They also had recommended by a nine to zero vote to also support the request. So, I know the reason why we're here is simply, I guess, to hear public input. So, I'll try to answer any questions that I have.
All right. This time, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
We have two speakers in favor, no speakers in opposition.
Okay. Call your first speaker.
Our first speaker in favor is Alex Colbreth, Mr. Alex H. Colbreth.
Mr. Chairman, this is not in my field here talking. I should have got Sally to speak for me. She's a much better speaker than I am. But yes, gentlemen, this is a piece of property I purchased for this reason, and I'd like to clean it up. It's a dumping station for anybody that don't want to go to the dump, and the dump is only three tenths of a mile away. And it's an eyesore to the community. It's an eyesore to the county, and I would think it'd be an eyesore to the neighbors. And I know part of the neighbors. I've lived out there all my life. And so, most of the neighbors, I know them anyway. And we're just trying to clean it up. We're trying to get some revenues off of my investment. And of course, we've already talked to some builders. They're talking about building four $250,000 homes, which will be a million dollars worth of taxes off of a million dollars for the county. And my son and I are in this together. He's going to speak if necessary, but he clears lots all over three counties, and that's what he does for a living, is cleans up places like this. But if you could seen a better photo of that, you would have seen all the debris out there that just, you know, I don't know whether they don't want to go to the dump or something they won't take. And there's been, it was a trailer house there at one time, and a house that he referred to, because I've lived there all my life. The house has been there 70 years. I don't know when it was built. I know it was a blind lady lived there. I know that. But that's kind of what I have to say unless I need to say more.
Thank you, Mr. Colbreth. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Alex C. Colbreth.
He said I covered it, so.
He covered it. Okay. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Under staff recommendations, in Case P-20 dash 15, planning inspection staff recommends the approval of rezoning from A1 Agriculture to R40 Residential, and find the request consistent with the Vanderd Use Plan 217 designation to rural residential. Rural residential designation allows for one unit or less per acre and desires a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. Staff other finds approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest as the requested district is in harmony with surrounding existing zoning and land uses, and any additional lots, units would be subject to a development review. My motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded and in discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. That moves us to Item 4D, Case P-20 dash 38.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Manager. So, again, this is P-20 dash 38. This is a proposed citizen-driven text amendment. As you recall, we brought before you, some months back, a change to our RV section to try to tighten up and clarify some language in regards to how we handle long-term stays and various other things in RV parks. Well, that passed. Couple months went by. We've had a citizen who's now come up who has, I think, trying to see about getting the ordinance changed for some projects that I think they're apparently trying to work on right now. So, the proposal that you see, just to put it in brass tacks, they tried to change, or they're proposing to change the definition of a park model, an RV, to specifically add that to our definitions. And that's in your packet, so I'll just let you read that. But also, the request is to allow the park models to have an open or covered porch or deck. We don't allow those types of things in our RV parks because that, again, leads to this non-transient nature of what these types of uses are supposed to be or intended to be. And then, it excludes the park model from any of our established RV stay time limits. So, you could literally stay in a park model years. And so, some of the planned considerations that we had thought about as staff, when we brought this before to the, you know, to the planning board, is that we absolutely think that it circumvents the recently adopted standards concerning your length of stay. We believe that it also circumvents acceptable subdivision standards. We believe if you have what would otherwise be deemed as a permanent living structure on there, well, you're a subdivision. If you put, you know, a bunch of these in an area where you can drive in and you have a permanent residence, so you wouldn't have to have streets or any of the open space requirements that we would otherwise like require of a house or any other type of permanent structure. And then, of course, you know, it takes away from the intent of the transient uses of the park and RV parks. So, when we took this to the planning board, they also supported our recommendation of denial by a nine to zero vote. So, short and sweet, if you guys got any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Any quick questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Do you have any speakers?
There are no speakers.
No speakers. We'll close the public hearing. What is your pleasure? Who's got it?
In Case P-20 dash 38, I moved to deny the text amendment to the Cumberland County zoning ordinance and find this text amendment not consistent with the adopted 2030 Growth Vision Plan of 2009, policy area two of well-managed growth and development, where the vision is to create development standards for application across rural and urban areas to ensure efficient and quality development is achieved. Denial of this text amendment is also reasonable and in the public interest because the request would circumvent the recently adopted standards concerning length of stays inside the RV park and our campground, which would circumvent acceptable subdivision standards commonly utilized for detached living quarters and would take away from the intent of transient usage of the property.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. Okay. Item five, Ms. Cannon?
Yes, sir. Those are our items of business. 5A is consideration of the Sheriff's Uniforms contract. This was actually an item that was presented at your agenda session on Thursday, September the 10th. The county attorney has made some changes to the original contract drafted by the Sheriff's Council. And so, I'll turn this over to Mr. Moorfield.
Board members, I'm pleased to announce that Sheriff's Council and I both recommend this contract, if you have any questions about it. But.
Okay. Any questions of county attorney, county management?
I'll make a motion to a prayer.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
I just have one question. On Section 77, and I just don't understand why it doesn't go through finance or to the county manager, that the sheriff can agree to a price adjustment each year upon the contract that's providing. Is that what we do in the county? I mean, does every department head, I know he's not a department head because that's an office, but that just doesn't seem to be, I mean, that just takes away the authority of this board. I mean, suppose the price of judgment comes that, I mean, who gets to review that? I mean, I just don't understand that.
The increase, there's a schedule that shows the prices for the first three years.
I got that.
And this is, this is the contract that the sheriff negotiated with the vendor and what they had accepted. So, that's what I was trying to do, is get something.
But it's a price adjustment each year upon the contract providing supporting justification suitable.
Yes, sir.
And this board doesn't get to, so they can basically spend the county's money, and we just pay the bill.
Yes, sir.
That, something's wrong with that. I mean, I just.
This is just, this is what the contract, I mean, I think this was actually what, the way the RFP was set up for this.
I didn't know.
Because it's a unit, it's a unit, it was a unit price, each.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, the adjustment each year, I mean, I would love to, I mean, I mean, we just basically giving away what we do. I mean.
Hang on. Let me get down to the schedule.
I'm just looking at the background part on 77.
Mr. Chairman, may the Finance Director speak?
She may.
Okay. So, when the response to the RFP was received, it did come in with an increase in price each year of the three contract, the three-year contract term. And we did accept, the Board did accept the bid award, I mean, awarded the bid for that.
And I may not have a problem with that, but the problem I have is who gets to make that determination? We should be this board and Finance and the manager. I mean, that adjustment.
Okay.
I mean, there has to be, there should be some consideration that it comes back to this board. I don't have a problem with the contract, with doing it, but I don't, I don't see giving up that to Finance and to the manager.
So, Rick, one of the ways that this could be handled is that, so the Board approves the contract for each fiscal year. And if the price is changed, then it would have to come back to the Board for approval.
Well, if you look at Schedule 1, the prices for the three years of this contract are already in there.
Yep. But that's what I'm saying, then it's follow up with, he can approve any changes.
Yeah. 77 provides that the sheriff may agree to a price adjustment each year upon the contract providing supporting justification suitable to the sheriff. I don't have a problem with the contract. I'll change the suitable part to the sheriff, to the suitable part to the county manager or the finance. It has to come back here. I just don't see giving away that authority. If we make that one change, I'll vote for this contract.
And you're talking about a change other than the change that's already set out in the contract schedule?
I mean, I'm just looking at 77. I'm just reading what 77 says. All I'm asking, I don't have any problem with all of the other stuff. It's just that I think it should come back to the county manager on the, or the Finance, on the justification, somebody providing that justification that's suitable. That's our authority. That's what this board does. And so, what I'm looking at now is, yeah, we've got the sheriff, I love him to death. But suppose somebody else wins and they have, you know, they decide they want to jack that thing up 20%, and the bill just comes to us. Here's the bill. Pay the bill, Mr. Booth.
Well, let me ask the attorney a question. Okay. The contract calls for annual increase. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's in Schedule 1. You're, we're starting out, just looking at performance polo shirts. This year, they're $46.99. Next year, they go to $48.40, and the year after that, $49.85. The change would come about if the sheriff elects to renew the thing for a three-year term, and then there would be new price considerations.
I don't understand what. I, I don't understand what, if, if the contract has a specific increase increment each year, what, what discretion does the sheriff have? That's what I don't understand. Is there some, is that redundant?
To change, yeah, to change.
Forty-six seventy-nine.
Way the, way the contract.
Wait a minute, let me ask one attorney at a time here. Rick, go ahead.
The way, the way, yeah, the, the contract language would give the sheriff the right to change, if, if the, if the vendor come in like in year two and said, oh, I can't do it for forty-eight forty, it's got to be fifty-two ninety-five.
So, okay, so the sheriff, the sheriff can approve a change of what's already written?
Yes, sir.
That's what, that's, that's the problem I have.
Okay, well. If, if, if we don't approve the contract, then the contract's got to go back because it's not, it's not just us. It's a two, it's a two-party to the contract. So it's got to go back to somebody else, right? Whoever the vendor is.
Well, the vendor doesn't really care who approves that. That's not the vendor. All, all the vendor wants to be able to have that adjustment done upon justification. Mine is just who does that, that part. So if you just change that from the sheriff to county manager and finance.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Just scratch that part out?
About the sheriff.
And.
The, the, the stop loss on this is any party, and the county is now a party, can, can terminate the contract in ninety days for no reason. So that's.
All right, so if we, if we scratch through the part about the sheriff changing it, then we're done, right? We still have the contract. We have, okay.
We can.
Why don't somebody, what's your motion, Larry?
Just change that from sheriff to the manager.
Want to go ahead and amend your motion? Withdraw your motion, either way you want to do it.
Well, you know, we've been dragging this out for a long time. You know, I feel like he's the sheriff. He's elected official. I understand what Glenn's saying, but he's got two more years to be sheriff before somebody else runs the sheriff. I just. I don't want to get into a micromanaging situation where, you know, we're, we're telling someone what they have to do. You know, in the past, we've argued about things like this because, well, they're not local vendors. Well, this is a local vendor. We've argued before because these businesses are not minority-owned. This is a minority-owned business. I don't, I don't see a whole lot of issue here. However, if, if whatever it takes so that we can let the sheriff get some uniforms locally, I think that I'd be glad to amend my motion so we can put this to rest and make it happen.
All right, I'll, I'll continue my second to the amended motion then, and, and I'll just make, I'll just make the comment, or, or I guess I'll ask another question.
The county manager. I think what, what Mr. Adams was suggesting would just, in lieu of being the sheriff, instead of being sheriff, it'd be the county manager have the, make that decision. That's all.
And the county manager will bring it to this board. I know before that, that's all I'm asking. Change sheriff to county manager.
Okay, everybody's okay with it? Any other questions, comments?
Everybody looks at Jimmy.
Mr. Booth, I cut, I cut you off because Rick was talking at the same time. Are you done?
I'm done. I'm happy now.
Is he?
Okay, in that event, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Next item, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. Item five B is consideration of fiscal year twenty, twenty-one contracts for workforce development services. And before I turn it over to the county attorney, I do want to let you know that we have two representatives from Two Hawk. We have with us Mr. Sherwood Sutherland. He is the Director of Workforce Services. Raise your hand, Mr. Sutherland. And we also have Lindsey Amon. She's the Assistant Director for Program Administration and Operations. So at this point, I'll turn this now over to the county attorney.
Gentlemen, these, uh, these, these are the two separate contracts, and I've described in, in the memo a little bit about the rather contorted structure that we have to work, work with in, in workforce development. But it is the same vendor, Two Hawk Workforce Services LLC. It's a North Carolina company headquartered in Lumberton. And they were selected for both of these contracts through an RFP process issued by the Workforce Development Board back early this year. We have in place now an interim agreement that ran from July the first until the end of September that we had to put very, put together very quickly in June before we were really able to get a grasp on all the issues involved in, in these, in these contracts. The contracts have pretty much the same, the same terms that had been in place for a while, but I have made some significant changes and tightened up some of the language in there. For instance, it, there's provision in, in the contract that if the contractor does, one of the issues we have with, what we're having going through right now, the process we're going through is the state audits are, are, are monitoring of these contracts. And if they find that something has not been properly monitored or not, not, the expenditure hasn't been, not properly made pursuant to all these regulations, they can disallow it, and the county would become liable for it. And, and this contract has provision in it that if the contractor causes disallowed costs, it'd be liable to the county. The county can withhold additional funding or from other contracts. So we've got, got that covered pretty well. This contract also provide, has a provision in it that allow the county to assign its responsibilities to, under the contract to a third party such as the Council of Governments. There, there has been some discussion at management level about that, so we make sure that there's, everybody is aware of that. And, I mean, they're, they're rather lengthy contracts, and there are a lot more attachments to this, but there are internal financial forms that we're using, and some of them are lengthy. One of them is, the, the budget for program services has the invoice form, and that's what she just, in a hurry, had to get this to me with, with the budget broken down for each program and each budget category. And this contract requires, or both these contracts require that the expenditures stay within the, the allocated budget, basically line items in each one of these programs because that's a state requirement. It's, the services contract is, is a total of two-point-two million, and the one-stop operator services contract is a four-hundred-thousand-dollar total contract. And I'll try to answer any questions that you may have. It's, it's a.
Any questions for the county attorney?
I got a question.
Mr. Keith.
Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Attorney. Two Hawk was involved in workforce development prior to this as one of the contractors, correct?
They had the existing, the, the last year's fiscal year contract for the one-stop operator, but not, but not the services.
And is there any conflict between one contractor having both contracts?
It would be a better practice to have two different contractors in this, but Two Hawk was submitted in, in, in Workforce Development Board submitted the best proposal in, for each of these contracts.
Is it best practices or, and, or is it anything that is, that is not legal in the? It's a very convoluted workforce development.
It is very convoluted. The reason I say it's the best practice is because one of the responsibilities of the one-stop operator is to coordinate the activities of the other entities involved in the work, in workforce delivery. So you really can't coordinate yourself, and, and that's what that issue is. But you've also got state folks in there, county folks in there. And, and then, and it's not, the one-stop aspect of it is, it's not just workforce development, but it's the unemployment office. It's all kind of rolled into one.
Thank you.
Rick, you just want one motion for everything, or?
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question of the new contractor?
Sir. I just asked a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You, you can, you can approve these both with one, with one motion, yes, sir?
Go ahead and ask your question.
Contractor, if you wouldn't mind, could you come? Well, thank you. This has been a long time coming, and I think all of us have gotten an education on workforce development that I'm not sure that we wanted to, to know how cumbersome this, this is. There is a little bit of a concern, but it, it may be a positive in that we have one contractor doing both, both jobs. But without getting deep into the woods of how things were before, what is the expectation that the county workforce development and its clients can expect with Two Hawk that we weren't getting before?
That's a very good question, and I will put it to you this way. We have been, we started our workforce business in two thousand and fourteen with one contract. We have grown now thirteen counties across the state of North Carolina in six years. We have never lost a contract for performance or for doing a bad job. I don't intend to start today with Cumberland County. I'll be very frank with you. I don't like to lose, and we aim to do our work. We expect a lot from our staff. We keep very close tabs on our programs. We have.
Get closer. I saw it getting up. I didn't want her to come get you now.
No, I don't, I don't want Sally to come get me. Don't, don't pick a fight with the PIO. But we're very cognizant about the issues of WIOA. I myself worked for what was the Employment Security Commission and DWS. After retiring, I was a regional manager for this entire area before I retired. So I'm familiar with, I've been in it since it was JTPA years ago. And convoluted is a really good word for it. But we, I understand the ramifications, the severities of situations that can occur with this. We try to watch our staff and our people and our payroll and our record-keeping, our finance record-keeping. Probably too much sometimes. I mean, we get, we can get in the weeds pretty quick. But we're in with you. That's the way we approach our business. We've got them in small places and large places. Couple of places we do both the center management and the operation of the program too. But we view it, if there's a problem, we're in it together. We do not want you to have that problem. I'll, I'll put it that way.
If I could ask you to.
Yes, sir.
Just talk, so what can you do better than the last contractor? And how are you going to measure success for our workforce development to make it one of the best in the state?
Okay, what we can do better is we can pay direct attention to your programs here in Cumberland County. Since the transition, I will say in April, we've already been on the ground from April till we signed the, the interim contract, trying to work and find out what was going on, what needed to go on, those type things. I'm involved, Lindsey's directly involved. We have a contract, we actually hired a contract manager, and her responsibilities, one of them is this contract here. She's also involved in the Lumber River contract that we've got that's same size practically, dollar-wise. She's been at it a long time. She's actually been with me since we started in two thousand and fourteen. So we're going to give you the specialized attention, and we're going to be on scene when there's an issue or a question or a concern. We try to be there before that happens, quite frankly. As a matter of fact, I'm going to be in the office tomorrow myself, just to, so we're getting off on the right foot. And can you repeat the second question?
How, how are you going to measure your success?
Measuring the success, part of that is driven by the contract itself. There are performance indicators on how we earn our profit, and we have to do those things. I have a boss too that owns the company, and he really prefers that I bring profit back. So that's a big push. We've set some goals ourself for the center, and we've been in discussions with the center, the board staff, as well as the center staff already on what we expect. We believe career centers should be places of employment. They are not able to be everything to everybody, but they can be the place that people can come and try to find employment and hook to employment. Some people need the services of WIOA. Some people just need help connecting to a job. And we're going to work to re-establish those type points because there are folks that come in that may say, I just need you to help me. Just help me connect with something and point me in the right direction, and that's all I need. We need to respond to that. We don't need to cookie-cutter everybody. The other person might come in that really needs the help, resume assistance, job search assistance, and they may need the help through WIOA of upgrading their skills. We're going to route them to those programs and do so efficiently and effectively, but also correctly. I have no interest in having to stand before you at any point in time and explain why something has gone bad. That's just not in my nature. I don't want to do that. I don't intend to do that because we're going to manage our programs. We take special interest in what we do. I do treat them, I tell my staff, I tell other staff that we hire, I treat them, quite frankly, as my children. And, uh, I don't like to lose my children, and I don't like them to act up in public. So we, uh, we take a real strong interest in everything we do for you, but we work to be the partner you expect us to be.
Thank you very much. I, I'm looking forward to you having this contract and seeing some good things come out of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming up and joining us tonight. I appreciate you.
Motion? We need a motion. Make a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, on, on that, and, and that's just one thing. I think at some point, though, for us to know what Mr. Keith was asking, either the Workforce Development Board, or they need to come and, or do some quarterly to us to be able to know so that we don't sit here every year and then figure out, oh, it went wrong. So I just put that out.
Maybe the next chair would appoint somebody as liaison to this particular, not mention any names.
Item number six are the board's nominations.
Okay, we have a nomination for the Cumberland County Workforce Development Board. There is one vacancy. Do I hear any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, there was a representative of business, Melissa Pennington.
Okay. Other nominations? Okay, we'll close those nominations. At this time, we'll take appointments. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes, um, there were a number of appointments for the workforce developments are off a motion because it's the same number of vacancies as, as appointments. Representative of business category, Tammy Beckley, Jimmy Ray Platter Senior, and Diane Potts. Representative of workforce apprentice category, Curtis Brown Senior, and Kia McMillan. And representative of economic development category, I'm not sure about that one, but, oh, Robert Van Gens. That would be the motion.
Not sure about that one for sure. Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the appointments. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll recess the board of commissioners' meeting, and we'll convene the Grace Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board Agenda. Number eight, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. We have two items. Eight A is the approval of the minutes from the April twentieth, twenty-twenty Grace Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting. And we also have item B. This was an item that was reviewed at the agenda session on September the tenth. It's a water service utility agreement with J F J Investments for Deer Meadows Subdivision.
Motion to approve the consent agenda for Grace Creek Water and Sewer.
Second.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All in one, okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Motion to approve, and a second is the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, we're, okay, so we'll adjourn the Grace Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting and reconvene the regular board of commissioners' meeting. Item number nine is a closed session.
We have two scheduled, Mr. Chairman. Nine A is an economic development matter pursuant to North Carolina general statutes, one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A four. We also have an attorney-client matter pursuant to North Carolina general statutes, one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A three.
Okay, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Can we move?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, the board is in closed session. Okay, the board is in closed session.
Don't be polite, just go in.
Mostly go out of the closed session.
Who decided to come out of closed session and discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
There you go, adjourned.